All right, we're going to come back. So thanks, everyone. Hope you got a little bit of nourishment there. So this is Director Position 3. And our candidates are Steve Martin and Christina Mayer. Same format as before. Two-minute opening statement. You'll have a chance to ask questions from the mic or write the note, and it'll come up to me. The timer will flash a yellow card when there's one minute left for the answer and a red card when time is up. Each candidate will have one minute for their closing statements. And we will begin alphabetically. Again, you're both pretty close in the alphabet, but it looks like... Steve, you get to go first with your opening statement.
I'd like to thank the Jefferson County League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Steve Martin. My wife and I moved to Chimmicum 19 years ago this last May. Back then, Martin had just finished her third year of teaching biology and chemistry at Chimmicum High School. And after seeing how welcoming Chimmicum's teachers and parents had been to her, it didn't take much for her to convince me to move here. I'm a self-employed general contractor. I have two sons who thrive in Chimmicum schools. Reed is in eighth grade this fall. Ben is in 10th grade. I started volunteering with the kids in our area when my boys attended Chimmicum Creek Primary School. I was the dad that volunteered in the classroom to give individualized... individualized (laugh) help to students who were struggling with reading. For seven years, I've been heavily involved in coaching youth sports. Club soccer in the fall, Little League baseball in the spring. I basically spend seven months out of the year coaching youth sports. I currently serve on the Board of East Jefferson Little League. I'm optimistic about the future of our school district with its dedicated staff, small class sizes, and modern, well-maintained facilities. There are great things happening every day in our schools. However, Chimmicum schools are facing some challenging times in the coming years due to declining enrollment and how Washington State funds small rural schools. When people ask me why I'm running for school board, I tell them I have skin in the game. The decisions that the school board makes directly affect my kids and their classmates. I talk about the need for more parent representation on our school board and how being both the husband of a former longtime high school teacher and the parent of two kids that are currently enrolled in our schools gives me a unique perspective to the challenging issues our district is facing that no other prospective or sitting school board director currently has. When elected, I'll be a conduit for concerns and interests for parents and teachers. I'm committed to civil discourse and stakeholder engagement. I'll ask hard questions and confront issues with civility and respect. I look forward to contributing to the success of Chimmicum schools by taking a more active role as a school board director. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Christina Mayer. I'm a lifetime educator. I am a kindergarten teacher. I've taught Head Start. I focus primarily my professional career on early learning. I've also been a principal and a central office person. I've taught undergraduates at the University of Washington and career professionals in certificate programs at the University of Washington in Tacoma. I have been focusing a lot lately on thinking about what would make an effective school board? And really, there are characteristics that make effective school boards, such as focusing on what matters. Student achievement is our number-one priority. It's our core business. It's what we're best positioned to do. And school... all school practices actually have their roots in policy. That's what a school board does: make policy. I want to make sure that all of our resources are going to the right places. Not all of our students walk in the door with the same needs every day. Our budget should reflect our student learning priorities. It tells a story. I want to make sure that we have the right return on investment. Are we being accountable to the community? What services are we providing to which students and at what cost? What's it resulting in? I want to use data to inform policymaking. Without data, our reports to our community will be shallow. Let's not shrink away from providing our community with measurable results. And I want to engage the community. Attempts have been made to engage the community, but have lacked follow-through. Let's harness the talent and goodwill this community has for its schools and consider how we might get every ninth grader a mentor or how we might utilize all the skill-based volunteers in this community to give kids access to all of the talent that lives here. Thank you.
All right. You heard from these candidates and their opening statements. Now it's a chance for you to ask them questions. They could be similar questions to ones that were asked the first set or brand-new ones, but let's make them challenged.
I'd like to kind of go back to the question of prior, and that was focusing on merger. And not everybody sees it in a, you know, black-and-white way. There's certainly room for degrees of perhaps collaboration. What would be your ideas about possibly doing that?
Things can be going swimmingly at the primary school and the elementary school, but what will be judged on is our high school. And so let's think about what we can offer and what others are offering and decide together what would make the best suite of opportunities for our students. If we put students first, we need to be thinking about how we can give them the broadest set of opportunities possible, whether that's merger, collaboration, encouragement of some joint ventures. There's many ways that can play out. But my good friend Jennifer Wilson says to me, "The schools in Jefferson County are like a string of pearls." And I think Chimmicum just needs to find out what's the shimmer on our pearl that will invite our students to stay and thrive. There are college track opportunities, and I agree with the notion that we need to increase some of our technical and trade school opportunities for students. Not everyone's on a four-year track, but I never want to offer the opportunity as an either-or. I'd like to see the door stay open for all students regardless of what they're thinking they're choosing in the moment. So collaboration? Absolutely. Should we be talking about how we can work together? No doubt.
I'm with Christina. We're in like minds on this one. You know, there is opportunities to collaborate with Port Townsend. We have to be careful with scheduling and retaining our own students, but, you know, perhaps sharing foreign language or sharing... to be able to offer a more diverse course curriculum in the high school. We certainly have been working with them on consolidating some of our sports programs, the major ones that Port Townsend seems to be a little hesitant to take on, our athletes. As far as completely joining with them, I'm kind of on the fence on that. I think that we're two different communities. I coach kids from Port Townsend, and I coach kids from Chimmicum, and they're just similar children. And I want to make sure that our kids have a... go to a school that represents their values. And that's where I stand on that.
Continuing on the notion of collaboration, how would you improve the collaboration on this school board?
Collaboration on the school board? I mean, we have a bunch of talented employees of the school. One of the unique situations that I feel like I'm in as a parent of kids, I know the principals and the teachers and the administrators in our school district. It's through that kind of familiarity that I can... when I'm wondering about a policy, I can inquire with... I know who to ask, how that will affect our kids education-wise. Another thing is that some people... it makes them a little crazy how much the certain... the school board can like talk about certain items in a school board meeting, but I welcome that. I think it's through that long discussion that we come up with solutions that matter. Sometimes it doesn't work that way, but I think that it's important to talk about the issues and talk about the policies in the school board. And I would like to bring more of that because the business of the board shouldn't be happening on email between board members. It should be happening in front of everybody in a public meeting.
Well, first and foremost, the board needs to form a team. And what I've been noticing is we have a loosely coupled set of individuals that are serving us. I believe that the first and foremost important thing for our board to know is why we exist and what role we play. And sometimes I think that gets very murky. We need to take time to learn about the issues that are facing our children and our teaching staff and our support staff and about education more broadly. I go to school board meetings, and I hear sometimes inaccuracies in the way things are talked about. We need to utilize healthy conflict to push us forward. I see a lack currently of process skills, how to run a meeting, how to have conflict, how not to be circular in the discussion, how to make decisions and be decisive. We need to build trust with one another, and that will come, of course, with time. But it's an important tool in creating safety so we can disagree and then work through hard issues. I also believe that we need more clear leadership direction on the board. Someone needs to be in charge. When I see someone read an agenda item and then turn and look at the superintendent for the next move, I don't call that leadership. I think we need to provide leadership at the board level that comes from the place that we work from, which is creating the policy framework, to enable teaching and learning so that kids can leave our district well-prepared, whether it's for work or the universities.
I have not been to a school board meeting, and I don't know how well they're attended, but my question would be, what can the school board do to encourage parents to be more involved in their child's education and attending school board meetings to find out what's going on in your community?
This has been a tough one. School board meetings are open, public meetings. They're advertised. And when I go to the meetings, I see the same handful of parents, including Steve and Kelly and others, every time I go there. The answer to building more community engagement, I think, is a real one-on-one effort. It starts in the classroom with the teachers building relationship and extends to all the rest of the employees in the district, including the board. I'd like to move back to the practice of board members going out and visiting the schools and getting to know the students and the teachers and the parents a little bit more. That was a practice in the past that has been dissuaded in the most recent past, and I think that would be helpful for community and parents to know who we are. I also think sometimes it's useful for us to go out into the community. There's nothing wrong with a school board presentation at the Rotary Club, for example, where we're meeting some of the parents and influential community members. We need to try all avenues of reaching out and inviting people in, as well as us going out and meeting people where they are, because sometimes that's the first step to creating safety for people to come into the schools. People don't come for a variety of reasons. They've had a bad experience. They don't feel welcome. They're too busy. They're stressed out. I mean, there's just a plethora of reasons. So we'd have to really develop a plan and roll up our sleeves and get started.
Yeah, there is definitely a need for the school board to get out there in our community. You know, show up to Little League opening day. There's like hundreds of parents there. Last fall, you know, I was attending one of my son's tennis matches, and I looked out, and there was like a soccer game, a football practice going on. And as soon as the soccer game ended, the youth football, you know, program came on the field. Those are opportunities to engage parents. One thing that I think our current school board needs to do is arrive early, mingle with the crowd, get to know the parents that are showing up. That's something I'd like to do as a school board member. But yeah, there is definitely a disconnect right now between the school board and the public and the parents, and we need to change that.
I'm interested in accountability, but what metric will we use to judge whether you're effective at your job as a school board director?
So, you know, how you gauge whether we're doing a good job is... are we representing the school? Are we out there in the community, meeting with you, telling you? One of the roles of a school board member is to be an advocate and spread the good word about Chimmicum schools. You know, another one is creating policies that enhance and don't inhibit learning in our school district. That's a tough question. I guess that's all I got.
Ms. Mayer?
All right. Well, one of the things that school boards do is evaluate their superintendent, ask their superintendent to set some goals, but also have school board goals. Somehow, in the recent past, we've gotten out of sync with ourselves and out of order. And recently, Steve and I were the only two attendees at an open, public meeting, which was a school board retreat, where they were working to come up with some district goals. So my energy will go into getting us back into alignment so that we can hold ourselves and the superintendent accountable for accomplishing things. What happened at that meeting, two and a half hours in, lack of process, nothing had been done. And it was very hard to sit there and watch that happen. Ultimately, five goals were published, but there is a lack of agreement or ability to come up with measurable objectives under the goals. So right now, we have no metrics for how we will grade ourselves on whether we are supporting proven strategies to build quality instruction and personalized learning. But we could have objectives, and we could have metrics. And we could develop those into a dashboard that our community could easily understand and be more transparent in reporting to our community on a regular basis exactly what's happening. Our number-one job is educating children and making sure we have the highest-quality staff we can muster to get that job done. So in service of those two things, you can judge us on that. Can we do that?
My question is around kind of a comment you just made, Chris, about not getting things done. I have an eighth grader and a sixth grader. I'm a Port Townsend High School graduate. My husband went to Chimmicum, and we chose Chimmicum because of the support the community provided around the school at the time that we were growing up. I've been attending a lot of public meetings, a lot of community forums and school board held sessions I have participated in, all of the surveys and polling that the school's done and the community talks. My question is in regards to progress because when I look around this room, there's a few parents here, but the parents are not here because they have come and they have spoken, and nothing has happened. And so how are you, as a school board member, going to create a sense of progress at the school level? Because I think the community has spoken, and people know what is wanted, but how are you going to affect that as a school board member and move us forward?
Okay, Ms. Mayer, you'll be first.
Okay. You know, Kelly, I attended many of those same meetings and have the same sense of frustration about the inability to move from the gathering of input to actually crafting an initiative and implementing it. So there's a skill gap there. We simply haven't done it. And my thought is, if we can do that... because I don't think parents are going to come back and tell us what they need or want anymore if we just keep asking and doing nothing. So action has to be a top priority for us. And that goes back to the answer I gave a few minutes ago about aligning school board goals with superintendent evaluation and superintendent goals so that we have some ways to hold both ourselves and the superintendent accountable for the action. I've been at meetings where there's been like, "Let's fix the fence out in front and plant a garden by the flagpole and do all these beautification things. Put names on the building so people know where the new configured schools are." Has anything been done? No. And it's really frustrating to me how long things are taking. Frankly, July, the teachers in the AP History class asked for the textbook. It was on the board agenda last week. And it was only up for public comment for two weeks out of that time. That's not okay with me. And as a school board member, I think I would fuss about that, like that we need to do better than that.
I agree with a lot of what Christina is saying, but I do think that there are great things happening in our schools all the time, and we are just not getting the word out. Part of the choose... there was a committee of stakeholders put this document together called the Choose Chimmicum Enrollment Report, and it asked for there to be a concerted public relations program put together to tell the good stories about Chimmicum. One of my goals as a school board member will be to follow through with that particular goal. I see great things happening with my child's education. It's important that we acknowledge and listen to concerns that parents have. That's, you know, one of my goals as a school board member is to be a conduit for those concerns and comments.
I went to Chimmicum from grades four through nine. Feel like I got a great education there. Couldn't finish at Chimmicum because there was a migrant education program in Port Townsend, which allowed my commercial fishing family to take me fishing with them. So that was great. So I didn't jump out of Chimmicum because I wanted to, but I had an opportunity in Port Townsend. I like... when I reflect on my education, I like the flexibility that the two schools provided me. I've kind of followed this question of merger. But the thing that I really... for years of serving on boards and in leadership positions, what I really want to hear from you two right now is what are your top three priorities? What are the three things about being a school board member that you're fired up about? Because that is what I want to know and who I'm going to tick the box for when I get my ballot.
I'm going to start with that public relations problem. We need to do something about that, whether it's hire a consultant to... you know, I came up with this plan that I proposed to some of the school board members that we would be, you know, we would spend a little bit of money hiring a consultant to do some training and then give some supplemental contracts for a person in each building to run the public relations for that building and get the good word out. Number two, we need to figure out what's going on, why our kids aren't playing sports anymore. As a coach, I think I'm well-suited to gather up our youth sports organizations and our high school sports coaches, kind of have a summit and try to figure out, how can we keep these kids involved? How can we keep these kids engaged? Why are they dropping out? And keep them in? Get them young? And keep them inspired to play? Number three, you know, we need to repair this relationship between the board, the superintendent, and the union. And that's an important one to me. There needs to be more collaboration between those three. That's all I got.
Ms. Mayer?
Well, I have a three-point platform for generally about the district, and then I have some very specific concerns and issues that I'd like us to tackle. But first of all, let's start with the broader picture. Shifting our limiting beliefs. I'm tired of hearing, "It's just Chimmicum." I don't want to hear that anymore. I want us to say, "It's Chimmicum, and we're proud of it." And so how do we help people shift those limiting beliefs and believe that the investment that we're making in our community and our schools and our kids matters? It's an upstream investment, people. It matters for a whole host of reasons if we want to be a thriving community. The second thing is, we need to really, like Steve said, give people a chance to choose Chimmicum and offer something. What is the shimmer on our pearl that we can offer students and families so that they will choose to stay here and not go to Port Townsend because it's more convenient in the morning when mom or dad goes to work? And thirdly, we really need to step into our own potential and utilize all the talent in the community. SkillMation could offer a way for us to organize to give every ninth grader... we only have 40. ...a mentor. It could offer us ways to skill-bank all the talented people that live in this community and then offer kids coaches and partners on their senior projects and other opportunities. I don't disagree with sports, but I want to make sure that we're offering kids other intellectual extracurricular activities too, like robotics and Odyssey of the Mind, things like that that are academic in nature, because it's all about working together in team that we're concerned about kids having opportunities outside of the school day. I do agree, though, with physical activity. I would like to see us stay active and not turn all of our attention to sports that are in front of a screen.
Okay. I'd like to ask you about your vision for... or your view of your role in setting policies or for not just the administration of the facilities and the public relations, but for what's going on with... directly with the children, the curriculum, the discipline policies, the student services, and, you know, the teaching style. If you can speak to your visions of what your role is with the nitty-gritty of what goes on in the schools.
Ms. Mayer?
Well, by nature, the policy framework is just that. It's the policy, the suite of policies that enables the kind of teaching and learning that we would want to see. So in terms of teaching styles, there will be teaching styles from A to Z. That would not be my concern, as long as they're effective with the students. Right? So the day-to-day policies are... actually, there's a policy book about this thick. There's a policy on virtually everything you can think of. So everything in the school has its genesis in a policy. So we do have effect on all of those. I'll give you an example. Some years ago, I was involved in policymaking in the Port Townsend schools as a volunteer. I was asked to be on the committee. We worked for two years to create a suite of policies, much like you did here in Chimmicum, around healthy eating, healthy activity, and the way that we were going to work with our students in after-school activities with ASB, as it related to food, et cetera. Now, we have done some of that same work, and I'd like to see that kind of thing continue. Policies come from the Professional Association of WASDA, Washington School Directors Association, but they're boilerplate. They're not us. It's only when we dig in and really invest in the policy framework ourselves and give it voice and give it our own identity that we start to get the results that we want. We will see differences in the way that we behave with our students, the way our teachers teach, the way we value our healthy food and our lunch program, or that we call it fitness for life instead of physical education. You know, all of those things really matter, and that's where policy comes into play and what we can do as school board members.
As far as policy goes, that affects how we educate our kids, one thing that's always struck me is that in attending school board meetings, there's a school improvement plan that's presented every year. And, you know, I've yet to hear the question asked to the principals, you know, giving these presentations, "Are there any policies that are inhibiting learning? Are there any policies that could enhance learning?" Those are the kind of questions that I would like to ask. Getting back to, you know, better collaboration with our educators, with our superintendent, with our principals, there... with our principals, they're, those are like boots on the ground. Those are the people engaged with our students. We need to talk to them, also with our parents, too. That's what I got.
Thank you both. It's time for your closing statements. Ms. Mayor, we'll start with you. Your closing statement, please.
Okay. So, in closing, I'd like to say, "I have the skills, knowledge, and experience to be a valuable member of the board. I have crafted policies and procedures at both the state and local levels. All of what we do in schools has its genesis in policy. As a board member, I can model from the top down how to work as a team. Over the past several years, I have watched decisions fail to get made, simple things spin out of control, and nothing gets done. I offer the structure and the leadership that can bring those things into alignment. Recently, the board passed the set of five high-level goals, but failed to identify success indicators. That's our job as a board, to know what success looks like and to communicate it to the community. I can provide the facilitation and the process skills to get us back on track and demonstrate our leadership to our constituents. There are children in our district who are experiencing chronic stress, and I'd like the board to make sure we're providing the teachers and the support staff every tool possible to make sure that they're equipped to work with the students, to help them thrive at school. A vote for me is a vote for leadership, action, and transparency."
I want to start by saying I'm passionate about public education, particularly here in Chimaqum. In the coming years, Chimaqum School District will be faced with tough decisions on how to allocate our limited funds. Decisions will need to be made about funding or cutting programs and staff. Vote for me if you think parents should have a seat at the table when those decisions are made. If you're interested in electing someone that has a history of volunteering with the youth in our area, vote for me. Vote for me if you want a school board director who believes that for students to succeed, there needs to be a three-way partnership between schools, parents, and our community. I promise to work to strengthen this partnership. As a school board director who is involved, or vote for me if you want to have a school board director who is involved in youth sport leagues and will work collaboratively with them to find solutions to address the declining participation in our district's athletic programs. Vote for me if you want a school board director that treats our educators with the respect they deserve. As a parent personally, I know many of the district's teachers and principals. Being able to collaborate with these professional educators should be an important part of school board decision-making. And most importantly, when you elect me, I promise to be engaged, informed, reliable, and fair.
Let's thank these two candidates for... And you're clapping for refreshments, because we have a five-minute break. Refreshments are in the back. We're clapping for refreshments always. And remember, if you have the opportunity to throw in a little support, that would be greatly appreciated. The AAUW in the league had to pay for the room, so help us defray those costs.